This conference will now be recorded.
All this regular meeting of the Lawton County Commissioners Board. Then roll call, please.
Mayor Roberts.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gandy.
I'm here.
Commissioner Trevio.
Here.
Commissioner Boat.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
All right, if you'll join us on vacation.
Mr. Trevio. Yes, please bear your heads, please. Lord, this evening, I want to thank you for all of us gathering here and being healthy, Lord. I want to also thank you for all the good deeds that are coming our way, Lord. May you help us this evening make the right decisions, Lord. Decisions that will help this community flourish, Lord. Also, Lord, I just want to reach out to our new treasurer, Lord. May you lay your hands on her, Lord, and bless her, Lord, and have her enjoy being here with us, Lord. And also that she may catch on quickly, gather the numbers, and make us look proud here within the city of Lawton, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Join us in pledge.
Pledge to the United States of America and to Republicans for which decisions, one nation, one law, individual, and complete justice for all. Salute the Lord, and say amen to the county. See as simple, perfect friendships among the united nations.
May we see. All right. Lord, yes, go ahead. I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with a couple of amendments. First is to remove Resolution 2023-096, approval of Title VI plain coronary and city organization charter. And second would be to move action item Resolution 2023-094, final budget approval for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, to after the consideration of the minutes to, so we can speak with Michael, make this transition a little easier. We have a motion and second for amendment of the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boat.
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for the consideration of minutes of August 28, 2023, and September 7, 2023. Motion second for consideration and adoption of the minutes. Any corrections? Any discussion? Hearing none, Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner Trevio.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boat.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion into action item Resolution 2023-096, oh, 095, or, I'll get it, one of these days. Final approval fiscal year 2023, 2024. All right, we have a motion and second from this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I would advise Mr. Steininger maybe a few minutes late. Like 5:45, is he kidding me? Oh, okay.
I was like, we're going to come through all of this?
So, as you know, Mr. Steininger has been working on our budget for DFA submission, and he would like to go over with you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Steininger, how are you this evening? Can he hear us? Okay, damn.
Somebody know that IDIAP?
Okay, looks like they've been unmuted. We can hear you, how are you, sir? Okay, very good, yourself? Very well, thank you. We moved you up, yeah, we moved you up so that you wouldn't have to sit through a lot of discussion and other things, so that you, I'm sure you had something better to do this evening. So, you're on board as long as we need.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you very much. I sent to Sharon the information for, for the pannequins. You should have a copy of the recap that looks similar to the one that we did on the quarter report, in detail, line by line within the budget. And then, to make things easier for you and also for management, the new finance director, I went through and provided a line by line change of everything that was changed from the interim budget that you approved, to the one that is being presented tonight. Most of it is in the areas of payroll, which is not uncommon. I did, first of all, I did want to make sure all of you understand this is, this is your budget. It is, it's not anything that was, was done by DCA specifically. We did, we did tweak it, we did make some adjustments based on some issues we ran into. I did go through it, if you look at like the first page of, of all the changes I made, the changes to franchise tax, municipal GRT, I went through and updated those to last year's actuals. And we spent a number of years with DFA, while I've never approved budgets, I know, I know what they look for. So, I went through and polished up and realigned some of the stuff in, in keeping with what they look for. I did, I did cap certain things such as the property taxes. There's a specific formula that DFA uses that you cannot budget more than that. It's based on assessed values, your current rates, the collection percentage of your family treasurer. So, we capped it off at that. But the whole of the changes were in the payroll. And I wanted to make sure we didn't go through this year what we did last year. Most of you may or may not remember that last year, the payroll was done very late in the process, and it basically eliminated entire departments. Because in order to pay the employees, everything else had to be removed, which was unrealistic. But given the timeframe we were working and what we had to work with, it was the only thing to do. So, David and I, along with Mr. Fiero, we discussed early on the pros and cons of doing that again this year in order to get you filed versus letting it be a little bit, we're already late, so another week or two late, but having it done right. We all agree it was more paramount than, than expediting the process and then leaving somebody with a whole bunch of budget adjustments to do. We did, after the conversation, we did consolidate the cemetery fund back in the general fund. At present, all you were doing was constantly subsidizing a fund that, for all purposes, is a department of general fund anyway. If you do not concur with that, we can always undo it. But that was probably the biggest change from last, from last year's budget, is we consolidated that down. We did, we did regroup a couple of funds, because after discussing them with, with the manager and with Melissa, we had no idea where the, where the numbers came from, what they amounted to. And rather than just wait and see what happened, we decided to remove that. And whatever the issue was, Tracy or somebody had knowledge of, if it materializes, we can always adjust it back. But we didn't want to leave in something that we, that none of us had a good idea of what it was. The first, the biggest example of that was the $1.6 million intergovernmental grant that was budgeted for revenue, but no expenses. It's unlikely you're going to get the grant and not spend it. So, now, nobody knowing what it was for, we decided to be conservative and, and remove it out. We can always put it back in. The budget was also updated for all of your current debt. Most of you, it was the same as it has been, there was some refinancing with the magistrate court bonds. And all of the, all of the debt is now budgeted to come out of where the NMFA fund is located. So, you have one coming, you have one coming out of the courthouse fund. You have another one that is coming out of, I believe, I believe it was water, wastewater. They were all, they have now been aligning to be expensed where the debt service accounts within NMFA are currently located. Again, the biggest change was in the payroll. We wanted to make sure that it was, was entered, and I think Sharon for her expediency and getting, going through that and getting it back to me. That project, while not normally hard to do when you're doing an entire year in one shot, and you're doing it with the high levels of attrition and turnover that we're all experiencing now, I just wanted on record to commend her, and she did a fabulous job in, in getting that so thoroughly done. There were very few questions that, on it. So, with that, I'll, I'll stand for any specific questions on either how something was done or how we modified it. If you are interested in specifically seeing line by line what was done, there was a somewhat messy, but report that I provided the manager that detailed specifically every single account. So, we're on this summary page, it just has the account title on it. The form that I sent in has the, has the account number, everything else. But you can, you can see on here every change that we made from what you approved to what we're asking you to approve tonight. I'm sorry. Your?
Mr. Trevio.
Mike. Hi, David. This is David Trevio. So, on our final budget, did it increase, if we have increase in what we projected, or did it stay the same?
Let me take a look. I may, I don't, unfortunately, I don't even know what the summary was, based on the interim budget. I could put that together, but I don't have it on a recap page like I have this, this final one. There, most of it was, was not increases per se. It was either solid numbers that were already there, or the interval under debt service, which may have increased some. But there was, there was at least nothing that we did between the interim budget. And now, there was nothing that we did where we went in and changed the direction of a fund, or we changed its purpose where we would have kept more in. I mentioned that we did consolidate the cemetery back in the general fund. So, there will be an increase in general fund, offset by the decrease in the cemetery fund, but specifically increasing a fund, there was nothing that the manager or I did in between the interim and that.
Great. Yeah, the whole reason why I say, Michael, is because, you know, we base it off a little over 800,000 on a GRT-based monthly, other than other revenues that we have coming in. And I, it's a target that, it's easily seen from commissioners up here that can eyeball it. Because reality, our, our average has been a little over 600,000. And this past year, we did 800. And it's worrisome to me, so I kind of like to want to just keep track of it. And once it takes a dip, I think I want to raise my voice definitely when it does. And hopefully the treasurer will raise her voice before I raise mine. But that's my target, you know, it's just like, average income was a little over 600,000, and we put it a little over 800,000. So, like I said, all, all revenues, GRTs are coming in good, but, you know, you just never know. So, that's where I was coming from on that.
Correct. And we, I, we, I didn't change, I didn't change the revenue amounts, I did realign them into the proper categories. If you'll notice, in the interim budget, municipal GRT was budgeted at $7.9 million. Your actionable proceeds for last year was about 9.4, but it was split between municipal and state share. But until you hit your manager cap, it doesn't matter what it's called, but for reporting purposes, it is to the state. They need, they need to be broken out. And so, again, with, with your new finance director in mind, we try to put as many things in the right places so that the note, so what they are beginning with actually has some meaning, and she, she will not have to go through and, and take that 7.0 million and then say, okay, no, it really belongs in these two areas and move it. We, we try to be as forward-thinking on as much of that as we could.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Scott-Boll. I'm fine with the adjustments that we made, I'm happy that we're able to shore up a couple of them accounts. Question with the cemetery, is that something that's just going to pertain to this year, or are we going to do that moving forward?
I would, I would recommend, before, we, when, when we talk with Mr. Fiero on this, DFA allows a cemetery to be an enterprise fund, but as, as all of you should, should be aware, an enterprise fund is something that should at least cover its costs. And with the exception, I'm sorry?
That wasn't on our end.
With the exception. Well, and with the exception of one municipality, I don't know anybody that it does. I mean, you, you have, or we sell the plot, you have an open, great opening fee, you have a great closing fee, and that's all the revenue you're ever going to generate on that one plot. But you're going to be mowing the grass, watering the lawn, whatever, whatever you do from now to eternity. And I don't understand why, why places do that. The other, the other issue with it is the, the crew that goes out and maintains the cemetery and mows the grass probably is the same crew that does your parks and does any of your other open areas. And it becomes a nightmare payroll to sit there, unless, unless these people are 100% dedicated to the cemetery. It becomes a nightmare for payroll to start allocating that salary around. You know, they spend four hours in the main street park, and six hours in the cemetery, and 10 hours over here. And, and so, now, in my opinion, since it is unlikely you'll ever cover its costs or even come close to it, is to just leave it in general fund and treat it as an operating department as you do anyone else.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because I don't see how there would ever be a self-supporting fund. So, I'm glad that's a good food for thought as far as moving forward.
Now, in saying that, we also had a discussion regarding the MVD department. When we, when we were talking about transfers overall, and if you recall, last week, I mentioned that one of the things transfers are for is a subsidy. The MVD department also is not budgeted to be self-sustaining. But that's a department where I generally recommend, even if it's an enterprise, so that the governing body can look at it and see, what is it costing us to run this operation? And is it worth it to us or not? There, you know, I think in your case, the final number was about $50,000. Well, that, that may be worthy enough to keep the department operating so that your citizens don't have to drive to, to another community or wherever the next MVD office is. But in some, in some areas, I, I used the, I think in the meeting, I used the example of Wagon Mount. The next nearest MVD office is two hours away in, in Las Vegas. So, whatever is costing the village to subsidize the MVD is worth it so that their population doesn't have to drive two hours to Las Vegas to get something done. So, that, that was a department that we talked about and decided that it was better to leave it on its own so that that could be monitored to see, so that you, you as the governing body and the board of finance can look at that and say, okay, 50,000 is reasonable, maybe a quarter million is not. And the best way to trangle all of that is in the independent fund, because when you put it in the general fund, it disappears. And, and it's harder, it's harder to track.
Well, Michael, it appears that you have exhausted a lot of the questions. I have one statement, and I just want to make sure that I'm correct. We are projecting $27.6 million in revenue. We are projecting before reserves, 23.2 million, oh, excuse me, I'm getting the right call here, excuse me. 23 million in expenditures, which is a little over, a little over 4 million, four and a half million in excess revenues. I hope that we are able to achieve that. Of course, also putting aside 800,000 in reserves during the year, which increases the net up to about 25, a little over 25, excuse me, a little over 5 million. Anyway, it's a, it's an ambitious revenue cycle, and I hope we are able to reach that. So, we will have to let you know how we're doing as we go along. I want to make sure that I, that I read that correctly.
Yes, you did. Again, but remember, 27 million in revenue with 23 billion in expenses covers all of your citywide. For instance, the state, the general fund, 10 million and 9 million. So, you're, you're taking a lot, you're, you're looking at a very large pool of money, of money covering a lot of different things. For example, in the, where to go here? In the 216 municipal street fund, there's 225,000 budgeted revenue, but there's no expenses, and in conversations with the manager, there is a project that that money is being targeted for. The money has been accumulated over the last couple of years. And, and so, at some point, there will be no revenue, but there will be a lot of expense. So, also, if you're looking at that bottom line number, you also need to remember there's a lot of variables that go into just those two numbers.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions? If you have nothing further, I guess we will proceed with our vote.
All right, I have nothing, and this will be filed as soon as Sharon sends me the signed resolution.
Any other? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boat.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yeah.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. Thank you, Michael. We will allow you to go back to the rest of your evening. We appreciate your work on this.
Our commissioners have been, it's been my honor to assist the city of Lawton once again. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. All right, this brings us to our commissioners and our staff report. We appreciate your indulgence in letting us get that out of the way. At this point, I would like to introduce our new financial director, Ms. Annette. If you want to stand, so everybody knows who you are, or whatever you might do. I believe this is her first commission meeting, it's also her first day. So, she's had an event, a visible one so far. So she's had an event, a visible one so far, but we're so glad that you're here. Uh, we are looking forward to you effectively handling all of this and doing the reporting in the near future. So, uh, you have a, a big task in front of you. Welcome aboard. So glad you're here. All right, it's bringing Shannon. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, I just need to hand you the signed budget that Michael was referring to, your resolution here. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gaston.
I have nothing at this time.
Nothing? Chief, how are you tonight?
How are you all today?
Hi, we're doing great.
Uh, to the mayor, the commissioner, city manager, uh, just to give you updates on the radios. Uh, we, all our officers have been issued handheld radios. And also they have been issued the new dash cameras in the six new years. Also last week I had two, two in reservation. Well, we have one that starts the 25th and another one in the north.
And we have one in the academy, right?
Yeah, we still have one in the academy.
Well, I'm sorry if they left. Trust you on that.
Yes.
Question. All right, well, thank you, chief. We appreciate it. Commissioner Bowles.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. I don't remember what I usually say.
Again, a lot of me.
Oh, I thought you forgot the other one. I was just trying to think. Thankful, too.
Oh, thankful for that, yes.
Now, I appreciate everybody, uh, again, for being here. Please, uh, when you do your shopping, when you, uh, go out to eat, think of Loughington first. I said it means a lot to the community, it means a lot to the businesses. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Where's Trina? All right, Commissioner Mike. Commissioner Gandy.
Shannon, I had a, one of the, the pattern here lately. Um, when you do the roll call vote, um, you're leaving the mayor last every time. And so we haven't never done that in the past. We've always just rotated the whole staff. Does it make the, where he, it's like he always has to make the decision? And he has the shared responsibility of it all, so that shared responsibility should shift between all of us. And it just, I, I don't think there's anything, Patrick, is there anything against that that you do know of? So I think if you just rotate him in with the cycle, that way that last responsibility falls on whoever and not just one person. I think we could change that up and use some different people on.
I, I know, because officially, my vote is, is the tiebreaker. It doesn't matter only if it were to be, it would still be that way, but it doesn't always look the, Commissioner Gandy brought up a good one. Doesn't look like I have to make the title. It's all on me. It, my vote is the same as everyone's.
So if we could just change that up, that'd be great. Other than that, um, on 11th Street between F and G, there's a water leak.
Light sensor.
You cross the street from there?
Yes, sir.
I didn't want to let somebody know because, you know, I keep driving through, I think my wheel's going to fall through. I don't pay ditches in the morning. I don't want to hit the guy's truck and, you know, different things like that, so.
They have advised me that they were trying to, I think it's a very empty traffic.
No, I have a school.
So we're trying to have at least a path to closing, but.
That's not really going to work, but yeah, it's a great, great, great thought, you know. So it's kind of blow out at 3:00 in the afternoon. Traffic is at the absolute worst.
Right.
I just, I thought I'd mention it since I do drive over every day. My wife tries to visit, I drive through. It's going to be a good citizen. So other than that, I didn't have any.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper, uh, do you have anything you would like to talk about this evening?
No, I'm just happy to be here.
Uh, I will give a little bit of insight. This morning, uh, I walked in and she was arranging her office. And there was all of her items strung everywhere. And she says, welcome to my chaos. And I said, welcome to ours. Anyway, well, I was hoping maybe you would have all the books and everything done today and the rest of the year would be easy, so.
Yeah, Friday.
Okay.
Give me till Friday.
Oh, perfect. Sounds great. Well, we are very happy you're here.
Glad to be here.
Mr. Miranda.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, member of the public, members of the public. The entire city lost four this morning for less than one hour. The explanation is that this breakdown of service was a combination of natural, technological, and human elements. Lightning struck our SCADA, our SCADA system RTU, which we control the box and tripped it last night, or early this morning. For those who don't know, SCADA stands for supervisory control and data acquisition. However, as you may have seen by recent large expenditures, we are in the process of transitioning from an old SCADA system to a new one. Human element of this issue was the SCADA technicians failed to program the new SCADA systems to transmit alarms to our water department personnel for low water conditions. This was the SCADA contractor, this wasn't our water department. Thus, when both booster stations, which are located south of town by the Navajo, started running low on water, the system to monitor was down from the lightning strike and both tanks, which are equalized, almost ran dry. Because the alarms had not been programmed on the new SCADA system, no one from the water department was notified by the system. I was in contact with both SCADA technicians and the water department personnel before 6:00 AM and SCADA took responsibility for the incident. Clearly, this is unacceptable and I made that clear to them. Public was kept informed at all times through the city Facebook page and various social media websites. The city apologizes for any inconvenience. Secondly, I'm happy to report that last week we signed a sales contract for the last remaining property located on the site, which had been cleared for veterans memorial park. We expect to close on that parcel of land in the next month or so. Meeting, the city will have the entire city block for the development of the memorial or for any other purpose that the commission sees fit to use it for. I'm told that the city has spent approximately $400,000 in acquiring this land since 2019. Next, we have had all the utility poles at the softball fields on North Love inspected and we will be having ARC removing and replacing eight poles to ready the facility for the new lights, which will be ordered. We have a poll for both the lights and the installation and the whole project will come in at around $100,000. And finally, we are utilizing a re-appropriated grant of $200,000 to purchase four additional trucks for the water and wastewater departments. And I'll be happy to stand for any questions in commissioning.
Commissioner. That would be me blessing you, but you're able to.
Data on the SCADA system and the water. The only thing I, I'm kind of puzzled by is tanks must have been pretty low, you know, because that happened at night. It didn't happen part of the day. So I guess, you know, if all the tanks are full, even all half full, you know, the two, two upper tanks should be full, but the two lower, lower ones are part. If they were half full, I figured we'd at least have enough. But, you know, it's kind of like, got to figure out, you know, I just, I'm just saying we're going around in circles and that, and it's not true. It's just that something to think about, you know, but because it just seemed like we're going around in circles and everybody keeps blaming the system and, and it's kind of like, it's getting old.
It is getting old. I, I'm also the things I told the guy that I, I can monitor my house from Albuquerque. We live in for 50 bucks a month, so why is this happening? I mean, how can our water personnel not be getting alarms for low water? And part of it is we are transitioning from the old system to the new system, but their technicians just assumed that we were still getting alarms on the old system and did not program any of them. And obviously, as we transition to the new system, this should never happen.
And in addition, why, you know, it's because we have been putting money into that.
A lot of money, $4 million in the last three months.
Yeah. So, you know, we expect results and, and, you know, it's very, been there two months and see. So I'm not putting on the, I'm just saying.
And something I failed to mention, that the gentleman from SCADA will be here on Wednesday morning to meet with myself and the mayor. And we can't have a forum, but you and all commissioners are invited to, you know, participate or at least observe. So he will come here from Texas. And, uh, Patrick, yes, ma'am. Uh, with Bernard and myself in the night, I think at this point. This is clearly unintentional. They, they took the blame for it. Luckily Bernard was out there pretty much immediately, so he lost enough water total under, I think it's 52 minutes or something. I don't know where he went. But, and when the water came back down, there was some water hammer, so it's here at breaks, but I don't think we had any breaks. No.
Thank you.
SCADA is good when it works. We have SCADA on our systems too, and we're coming electric. And when lightning storms happen, sometimes some of our SCADA systems go out. So, but I can understand, we have ours monitored 24/7. So this is not monitored 24/7. The alarm is, we want to make sure that if it does lose power, that it does go back, it does come back up. So I'll see if I can be there also when that happens. Uh, question that I have, and I know we had storms Saturday night. Could have possibly went down Saturday night and we didn't have any alarms. And that's why this morning, if it went out last night, I would still think that we would have had sufficient water. So I'm thinking it probably went out Saturday night. But like I said, it's good when it works. But everything has its faults and all we can do is try and make it better and move forward.
I just know it's spent a lot of money.
Uh, I understand, I understand, but you're going to have witches. And until we get them worked out, just bear with us as a community. We'll get it right.
By the time we get them worked out, like all new systems, we need an upgrade. Let's hope not, Scotty. I was going to talk to Windows, whatever it is. Yeah.
If any of the commissioners would like to join Wednesday morning, I mean, probably have to step out. And we'll work it out. Or any questions that you have, we'll make sure they get addressed. I'm sorry. Uh, 9:30, yes.
It's supposed to snow, wouldn't it?
I hope.
I could probably make it if it snowed.
Oh, okay.
Scott won't be there if it's.
It's snowing. In the out, you be in.
My phone's going off right now.
We have bad weather.
Well, it was.
Get a lot of water.
It was supposed to be tennis ball, up the tennis ball side.
Yeah.
And it was building as we were.
They got 12 residences already in our system, so.
All right, so, uh, anything further, Mr. Miranda?
Yes, sir.
What's our time limit? Is that current?
Yeah.
It's coming. So it's, it's just about here. Great. Over here. Uh, anything further with, for city man? Ms. Bowles.
Good evening. Um, so we removed the Title VI plan and, uh, I did some training, uh, with the state people on this. Uh, there's a lot more to these plans than just doing a resolution to appoint who is the coordinator and redoing the organization chart, uh, which, you know, there's two different organizational charts right now floating around the city. Um, so I'm going to give each one of you guys a copy of those, uh, just so you can look at it. We need to review those. Uh, the plans are also on our line, the ADA or online at their website. So the ADA and the Title VI plan, if you guys could both review those older documents. Um, so that way when we come up with the revised ones, you'll kind of have an idea of what we're dealing with.
That's what I was looking at and that's why I called you, because we need to have something to compare it to. Times have changed. Uh, we need to revise this, not just put a new title on and save a piece of paper. Thank you.
I did start on my mat grant that was awarded. About a month ago, I finally got the final documents from the state with everything, all the, you know, i's dotted, t's crossed. So, um, we're going through CES with the Pender group and they will start the design for that ninth street. Any other questions?
I see you're here. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Commissioners, other than a few comments on, on the agenda, I guess I don't have anything new, but be happy to receive the questions. We, we have neglected and it's all, it's my fault, everything, to, to get on to the agenda, the railroad, try to cross scene. So between Shannon and you and I, I will endeavor to try to get that on the agenda in the near future. All right. That completes our commissioner's staff report. Brings us to our public comment. We welcome you to come forward and please approach your podium, state your name, and then let's let you on to here.
Mayor's Commissioner, City Manager, um, my name is Junior Hernandez. I'm the president of the Loughington ETC. Tonight, in a non-action item, um, we will be talking about, or discussing, the United Market Project. I'm going to formally introduce, uh, pleasure to formally introduce two members of the United that are here tonight. I'm sure, um, you guys will have discussion or questions that they can address at that time. Uh, I just felt it was appropriate to introduce them in public comment. Joe Rollins, and he will give a brief description, he'll give a description when he comes up here to address the commission, city manager, and mayor. And then also Sidney Copper, and he's part of the United Team. They traveled down from Love of tonight. I will stand for questions during the discussion, if you have any questions for the ETC. Uh, but other than that, that's all I have.
I'm going to throw a question out here. If it, if you gentlemen would be open to having the public also ask questions. I know, you know, this has been a, a long-term topic and there may be some questions that we don't think about or whatever, but just the people here may have a question or two. Probably will be a lot, but if you're open.
Would you like their introduction now? And, um, that way we can address questions during the discussion.
I would just do it during the public session then, and that way, uh, we can handle it all at once. I don't know that there is anybody else. Uh, if, if the public comment, you can come forward at this point. Pretty much all, pretty much the same crowd, so. All right, well, then we are here, public comment, both, and we will start this, so you can stand back out and do it again. Oh, sure, okay, yes. Hang on, Scotty, you want another shot for us?
Uh, in addition to, uh, Joe and Sidney, the travelers here from, uh, Love of for the United Project, we also have August Sanchez, who's a civil engineer. And earlier we had Eddie Valencia, um, on, that was on remotely. I don't know if he's still there or not. I don't think that, I think he was logged off when the passenger was logged off, which, um, is not a big deal. Obviously, she's representing him tonight, but it is my honor and pleasure to introduce Joe Rollins and Sidney Copper. And they, like I said before, they traveled out of Love of. Um, they'll be here for any questions. They're going to give brief descriptions of status on the project. Um, if you guys ask any questions you'd like in regards to square feet, jobs, all, all of the above.
Basically, just want to, you guys and ladies, so, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. Want to do a little history of our journey with the city of Loughington. First started a couple of years ago, Sidney, who was our division president, told me he wanted to go Hobbs and look for a second location Hobbs on the north side. on the north side, uh, the southern shore there does remarkable, it does very well, so we need to give it some relief. So, headed over to Hobbs and, you know, grow around and look at different opportunities on the north side, but quickly found out, you know, just basically from some of our customer services and customer spots, and said, we went anywhere in north of Hobbs, we basically half our business that of the existing shore, which wouldn't have been a good deal for, uh, for you and one of the stores. So, opportunity, I told Sidney, I said, I wanna go to Levington, take a look at Levington. We've just had a great experience in Pecos, Texas, with a similar sized shore, what we're gonna build here, store the stacks on sales, mix things on profits for us. And after, I guess it's two years ago, actually, met Ellen in this, in this building, and talked to her and said, hey, we're, we're interested in getting all the Democrat information on the city of Levington, citywide or possible alternatives and opportunities might be. And so, she, she gave me that, and then, of course, we go through all of her due diligence to look at different sites in the city. And we ended up on the north side, which we feel, and which tested out to be the better location for us in this, in this, uh, in this town. And so, we, uh, of course, going through, we're owned by Albertsons, uh, this will actually be an Albertsons market, which we ran all of our stores in New Mexico, Albertsons is supposed to be United, but United runs all those Albertsons markets. So, we decided we, uh, we do that, so I started dealing with Eddie Valencia as far as seeing what we could make a deal on his, his piece of property after we chose it. And then after we, you know, negotiated for months, then, of course, had to go through our whole corporate procedure, getting anything approved, which going through a major corporation is a, is a whole new experience, but. The good news is, we got approval last month to build our store here in Lubbock. And so, our budget, our budget was in good hands, and it was, somewhat thrown out of culture when New Mexico dot put on their requirements that had to be made to the road. Our numbers don't work with those numbers in our budget. Our, our rate of return is based on where we are today, is right at the bottom level that Albertsons will, uh, will receive, but. We did get approval, uh, we're excited about Levington, we love small markets, small-town markets, we do well all across Texas, and we wish to go. Our shore will employ hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty people. Besides that, of course, all during the construction phase, construction processes, we'll have, uh, contractors, you know, their contractors, like contractors, masons, and so forth, so. We'll bring quite a, quite a force of employees, or hiring employees here to do the construction as well as, once we get to the point to actually run and operate the stores.
One thing I might add as well, and I told Mr. Miranda this, this afternoon, we were talking, Levington feels like us, to Joe's point, our rural star, our, our store was in rural communities across Texas and out in Mexico as well. And I know there's some concern, and I heard the comments about shop local, uh, one thing that I would make sure that y'all do understand is that if we do come to build a store, it will be part of the community. One of the things that's very big within our, our company is, if we're gonna operate in, in any market we're in, we feel like we've got a responsibility to give back, and that's donating dollars in the community to help others. Uh, that's having our teams get out and help the community, we have what we call a youth crew in Texas, an A-Team in Mexico, where our team members get out and help support other nonprofits, I think. So far this year, we've donated about seven thousand hours, uh, community support in each of the markets we're in. We've got three pillars that we really focus on, food insecurity, children, and education, and we wanna make sure that, again, if we're operating in that community, that we're doing things in all three of those buckets, plus other things to give back, so. I just wanna assure you that this is not the thought of coming to Levington to build a store or to take resources back to Lubbock. If we come to Levington, we are going to be investing in the community in everything we can to support everybody, make sure Levington is successful, because if they're not, we're not gonna be successful, so.
That's one thing that I wanna ensure is that you do that, because that you're bringing a store, we appreciate that very much. But there's also other businesses here that you're gonna impact, and they do give to the community, so we wanna make sure that when you come, you're able to do that also.
We set a budget, we have a budget for the company, and we set a budget by market of dollars we're gonna give back in that community. And one example we recently used is that we do an annual golf tournament in Lubbock, and we raised five hundred thousand dollars this year. All, all those dollars go back to all the operating areas across all of our stores, so we, United weighs the benefactor, so we cut checks for twenty-six United Way chapters across all of Texas and New Mexico to get those dollars. So, you know, you can go on our website if you like, it's something that's really important. We were privately held for ninety-seven years, and that was something that's very important to the family, uh, and the Albertsons companies has allowed us to do that as well. Albertsons also has a foundation that's separate from the foundation that United has, and there's dollars there that we get up here that we're allowed to give back in our communities as well, so. I can give you my word that you would see that if we're operating here in your community.
You might explain some of the, some of the things that will happen in the store.
Yeah, so, one thing we learned, maybe, is we didn't build it big enough, uh, so the store here would be about seven thousand square feet, or about fifty thousand square feet. It would have typically what you would see in most, uh, you know, traditional stores, be market, heavy food service offered, that's one of the key departments we have, we do a lot of grabbing, do a lot of entrees in there. Producers department, living well department, you would have a pharmacy, uh, right now, we're planning on finding an application that was Starbucks that we go into as well. So, I think your final store would be very nice, we'll also plan on having a fuel and convenience center here, uh, which is a big part of our rewards and multi-program. Uh, as people become members, and you buy groceries, then you get discounts on fuel up to a dollar, and other grocery items within the store. We'll have a full-service checkout, we'll have self-checkout in the store, uh, so I think it'd be a very nice store. If you get over to Pecos, you might hop into that store there, this store will be laid out very similar as that store.
So, that were open questions.
Pleasure. I'd like to congratulate you for coming. And then location is, is perfect, that I, uh, when you guys first said you're gonna do Artesia Highway that way, I was like, I think somebody needs to come over here and look at it, and so I'm glad, when you said that, I said, somebody came over here and looked at it, because, uh, you know, I think you guys have your, your marketing people, but. Development always goes north. You know, that's, that's, that's the trend, and I was like, why are they going west, that's the trend is to go north, and, and there is a market north, and I, a strong market, and I figured, I was, I was glad, I said, I guess they're smarter than me.
Want them all there where you go and get something to eat.
Good having food, that would be a good show. Make it easy, not gonna travel all the way across town, through road construction.
Open minded, baby.
Yeah, if you don't mind, if I could take a picture for the local page, he was out on a meeting, uh, with the Lake County electric, and he had asked me to do some sort of, that, just real quick.
You could do a little bit of that, Scotty.
No, I think, I think we're at this point. I think you could zoom over there.
Where it's far away might be better.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, if I could add, um, one of the recent small sticking points with the project was the DOT road approval by cost. Now, we don't have a final number, but it's been estimated to be around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm not speaking for them, but they feel that that should be, uh, covered by another entity. I'll add that, you know, the Albertsons is kind of in Japan or the anchor project for what's gonna be other stores and, uh, projects around them, so basically, everyone's waiting to see if they come in.
Yeah, to plant the seed. Yes, they're the seed, and.
So, you know, we don't have a final number, and the mayor said, well, I'm gonna write a blank check, and it's a cost that the city wants to contribute towards the development. Number one, main thing to remember is, it would be spent by the city at the completion of the project, not upfront. So, in other words, people say, well, you're spending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for road improvements, they pull out, we got a nice road and an empty field, so that's not gonna happen. So, those funds would not be having to be paid until January of twenty-five, roughly. So, um, Mr. Fierro and I, Mr. Fierro and I have discovered or uncovered an account which I never knew existed. It has not been touched since two thousand and nineteen. It is derived from state gasoline taxes, which are paid to the city. It is currently, as of June thirtieth, it was at four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So, I would, it's safe to say, and it generates about fourteen to sixteen thousand a month. The intent of that, um, fund is to cover streets and brick and mortar projects. We have not touched this fund since two thousand and eighteen. Now, for those who say, well, it says municipal streets fund, I've checked the DFA and the Economic Development Division, and they all say, yes, it's a, it's a state highway, but it goes through your town, so it's a local municipal street. And it has been used in the past, I researched it, it has been used at least twice in the past to cover the projects on that street. So, I would offer up to the commission, we have the funds here today to cover the street improvements, more or less, and the engineers here, and it may change, but I think DOT is finalized it. But we have the funds in place today to cover something we won't have to pay for until the completion of the project in January of twenty-five, which could make this project a reality. And I'll just echo what they said, that I think some estimates say that the GRTs created by the construction shops alone will cover this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is gonna create a hundred and fifty permanent jobs for our community. So, I think that my personal opinion, the city could offer that four hundred and fifty thousand right now, although we don't have to right now, to cover the road improvements. Thank you.
So, with all intentions, we were hoping to have actual cost for improvement of the city too. Um, Fabius Sanchez, uh, he showed up today, that, that's still not state approved. We've gone through the process the last three months of sending them proposed plans, uh, just back and forth with Inks, right? We're jumping every hurdle that New Mexico DOT has put in front of us. We don't have an exact number, we have an approximate number, and it's somewhere between four hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and, six to six hundred thousand. We have no idea what it's gonna come to exactly, for reason, you know, is we have no control of what they're gonna include. Um, we had it, we had a verbal approval, so obviously, if you want to come up here, but we have verbal approval at one point, and then they decided that we needed to incorporate, um, deceleration lanes and also sidewalks. So, if you wanna kind of breathe them on what you have to go through, and it's been a moving target, I mean, the goalpost is moved every time he communicates, uh, with the state, um, but give a description of what you have to go through.
Kind of like nail the prime nail jello of the wall. I don't know if we can get a street built.
Yes, uh, so Commissioners and members of the public and Mayor, um, right now, I'm speaking on behalf of Eddie Valencia, which is the developer, owner of the land, or United, who will eventually be. But I also wear the hat of, uh, working for the Levington Economic Development Corporation on the improvements of these plans. The process actually started back in February, when, uh, we learned from the DOT that traffic study was required. And depending on the results of that traffic study, it was gonna be determining whether or not certain improvements were not. That traffic study took up to May to get approved. And on that traffic study, the, uh, the DOT required the deceleration lanes, one deceleration lane, and then also the training lanes and sidewalks. When, uh, we got moving on the plans, we prepared those plans without sidewalks, we actually tried to minimize the scope of the project. So, we engineered it in a way in which, you know, was not going to be as expensive, as expensive as possible while maintaining the safety of the valley. However, the DOT wanted the sidewalks, and they wanted more traffic control, and the main concern of the DOT today is not really the project and what it looks like in terms of the deceleration lanes or so forth. Uh, one of the things that we are doing on that, uh, stretch of road is changing the striping. Just the action of changing the striping is going to require shutting the lanes northbound and southbound. And the main concern of the DOT is any kind of, um, fatalities or anything that can happen while the traffic is, is being prepared. We're gonna have to shut down the entire street, uh, portion of it while we restrike. So, they wanted to see a very detailed plan where we are gonna have to draw every single drum that we're gonna put in there, just like stuff that you see out here right now. So, that's been the project that we're going to be, as of today, these plans have been approved at this street. Now, they have been sent to, so let me recap, for that fifth permit to be approved by the DOT, we are required to have a traffic study and design plans. The traffic study is complete and approved, the design plans are what we, we have been going through. And as of today, I've been approved by the city, but it has been sent to San Antonio. We believe that this process is not going to take long, and we expect this project to be resolved within a week or two, where we actually are going to have a permit, augmented permit, that would allow for the drug to move forward. And that's the summary of the access. Within the property, there's also going to be improvements on the adjacent land where United is going to be located. Uh, there's two properties involved. United will be involved, will be located on the Blackwood property, and the immunity south, which is adjacent to the Amity Island and the Pruitt property. That property is the one that will be receiving the access to United. So, there is also a set of plans that are being developed to allow the access both through the Pruitt property into the United, into the future United. That set of plans has also been in the process of, of development, right now, they are in the city's hands for review. Ms., Ms. Paul has been reviewing it for the last week or so, and we expect these plans to go through over the next week or two. So, in terms of design, and I know everybody says, and loves to say this, that we're waiting on the engineers, I hope that, uh, this is not gonna be the case over the next week or two. So, any questions?
I'll say, I'll say one thing on, on Fabius' point, I mean, he's been, he's been on about a, there, and he's, if you guys are in Mexico dot, I mean, Texas, it's not even better. And he's been, you know, spending hours and hours working with them, and, you know, like I said, that, getting deep attention on, and so it's, hopefully now they've got this or, this or, or, hopefully, hopefully it'll go smooth and see things as well.
Yeah, and going back to the four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, preliminary plan set that was developed from May, June, was sent out to three local contractors. The four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was a preliminary number that was turned up at us. Those plans were not, didn't have the level, you know, that they have today, because of the traffic control, the addition of the sidewalks, and a few more minutia, I have to, I have to, uh, junior that. We are operating in a window between four hundred and fifty thousand and six hundred thousand right now. Now, once we get these plans through, we're actually going to go into a bidding war with these contracts, so we expect this process to hopefully be, uh, at or below what we've been receiving.
So, let's look.
Go ahead, Scotty.
So, when will we have a timeline on this? So, as far as building the store, Bill Sharers, okay, so, right, so for, for United to proceed, uh, from a corporate level, and Joe please correct if I'm wrong, um, they want a letter of commitment from the city of Levington, that the city of Levington will take ownership in, in, uh, paying, reimbursing the cost for the development of eighty-two. So, um, there's a bit of scope out of eighty-two that's involved, which is ending the free ride coming out of the Parkland complex in Austin. That has to be done as well, that fits in, um.
That has to be done as well, that fits in what they agree, what city manager researched for upgrades for municipal streets. So for them to proceed and to the next level, they have to have a commitment. So commissioners, mayor, city manager are probably wondering why Lovington, our low guard fund is paying for it? And so just so everyone knows, we can't participate in any retail development. We can't participate in any of that. So this money has to come outside of our, of the low guard. If we could, we can change in ordinance, in our local leader ordinance to, I'm not sure if it would be to be the custodian of that money, but if it had to come from the city, general fund being moved over to our leader nonprofit, and then we would reimburse or pay for the project. You know, long drawn-out way, we would have to change in ordinance and check in our group in Lovington E D C, and then move it to you guys for the approval of changing that ordinance. So the thirty, forty-five, sixty days, they want to move forward, they want to proceed, they want a letter of commitment from the city of Lovington, that the city of Lovington would take ownership of paying for the upgrades of need to. And that's what we were, that's what we're here tonight to discuss. We've had various meetings with Mr. McMahon, the mayor, city manager, the Don Martinez, and they've been patient. You know, again, we, all this was, we tried to take care of all this before we got to this level. And so now, when we get approval, the brakes are on, we're waiting on us on at the city level to make the decision. So I'll give a brief description of this journey. Five years ago, the Lovington E D C paid for a study. And in that study, that study shows that it was very crucial for Lovington to grow, we needed an additional grocery store. We put our director on the road for recruitment. So this relationship started in Las Vegas, Nevada, at convention. And that's what brought Mr. Rollins into the city of Lovington. If I'm correct, that's the reason you knew who to come look for, right? So we've invested money over the last five years to get to this phase, and I think that's really important.
I know that leader is for infrastructure. So you're saying that we can't use the leader funds?
So the mayor, city manager, and I got on a video conference with the director of the state, and he advised us that we could not. But we have a low guard ordinance that when we passed it, there was never a sunset clause. We didn't, we have to go back to vote through our community to be able to include retail. So we take the risk of going back to vote through our community and satisfying them with a sunset. So we can, they can say, or we have to propose a ten-year, or twenty-year, or five-year, whatever it might be. So that's something that we don't want to touch. The ordinance or our leader ordinance, we could, that would take an approval of our board. But it would be funds coming out of the general fund by way of the leader.
Patrick, I want to bring you in here. One, today was the first that I heard of the municipal fund. The reason, gentlemen, that I haven't said, I've been involved in this before, five years ago, literally when we were trying to entice you in other ways, so, and I've stayed abreast, but is, is the municipal, the, they purpled it so much, it can very seriously.
Yeah.
Gasoline tax fund.
Gasoline, okay, so I can even understand what, read the first word, but anyway. Is there any problem that you foresee?
I never ask a lawyer that question.
I know, and I.
If you take a look at the minutes and the purpose of putting that fund into place and how it's been used in the past, I think it would fit in this situation.
I'm sure that Mr. Miranda had reached out to you, but I kind of want everybody to hear this while we're discussing. So that whatever direction, it is, it is my intent to help this project along. And the proposal that came from the state, I've been involved with since basically when we first talked about it, to keep out of anti-donation, and I want the public to understand, we cannot donate as a city towards anything that benefits a private industry. In addition to that, when we start talking retail, we have to be very careful because it would be really easy if we decided, okay, we're going to build a new city. We want to entice you to be the new, the first grocery store, and we're going to be able to give you whatever it is. The problem is, is we have existing grocery stores, we have entities that sell the same thing that you're going to be selling in various ways. And so we don't want to entice you, and they'll come in and say, you never helped us. And I know you've heard this in many, many communities. We develop the way, that's the beauty of it, where it is based, hopefully based on construction. And I would be able to tell the next entity, if you want to build your facility, we will be happy to help you with infrastructure and items along that line, all based on construction. I don't care what the G R T projections are down the road, because we're not even helping. But anyway, we just want to make sure that the money that Junior is talking about, that we would have to change the current leader ordinance.
Well, if you, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, sorry for breaking up, but so if you lose, if you used the gasoline tax, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we would have to change the local leader ordinance. It could, it could be done.
We won't know for another two weeks.
Yes.
Hopefully, boys, hopefully two weeks.
So we have a store project that's going to cost fifteen million dollars. We have a convenience store and gas station that's going to be thirty million dollars. That doesn't include appliances, shelving, any of the intermakings of the store, cash registers, whatever. Whatever goes in. So our current G R T tax is seven point zero zero. Roughly thirty-one percent of that seven point zero zero is what the city gets for G R Ts. So if you look at the construction cost amount, if we are sure that all construction is being built at seven point zero zero, five hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred dollars is coming to the city of Lovington with this new store construction. We wouldn't get, we wouldn't receive that money. Or selection of that construction unless they came here to build. So that isn't money that you're taking out. That, that money isn't lost by anyone, that is extra money created through the, through the time of the construction, and that is it. So in the mayor stated that that's not including G R Ts going forward. So this is where we've been. We thought it was really important, Mr. Rollins and Mr. Cooper wanted to come here, address the city, address the public, address the commission, along with the mayor and city manager, to hear it from them, right? This is where we're at, this is the next level, and, you know, ultimately, it is a decision that's on the commission and mayor's shoulders, right? It's a decision that needs to be made by you guys, and we're here to provide you with all of the information, situation, and that's it.
I have one question.
Yes.
There's a hypothetical situation, I understand, let me pretend to understand construction. Let's say hypothetically tomorrow, all the ducks fall in a row, and you could start your, your project. What is the timeline of completion? If, if everything wasn't, you know, the state of Mexico didn't throw over hurdles, we didn't have any more paperwork we've got to sign, you know, all our ducks are in a row, we're starting, and we don't have any stumbling over transportation or anything like that, what is your basic timeline of completion?
Based on capital expenditure restraint, that was some sort of station, we, we can't start until January, February twenty-five.
Okay.
They'll tell you this nine, ten months from construction start.
Oh, okay. Okay, I was.
It will be a metal building, it'll be a metal building, similar to what we did Vegas, but make it a person drive them by, put an ice beside it, put an aside on it, so.
I was excited, it's not a winged. Well, no, I just, I just, I was in my mind, I was trying to figure out, you know, I was figuring a longer period of time to build something of that size and have it up and running and everything like that, so I, you know, the, there's the period of time there to your start date, and then there's a shorter window than what I was expecting.
Our timeline generally two hundred and seventy days, give or take.
Sorry. Wow, okay. That's better than our written instructions.
You know, with the E E C being involved, we've invested in the projects that we waited now sometime to come to fruition, right? And that's why our, our advice to the commission is is to be on a reimbursement level, right? We don't want to do all of the work to U S eighty-two and then no construction ever starts, oil goes to twenty. You know, we have economic distress in the state of New Mexico or Lovington or the county for that. And then we're let, we're hung out for construction that we completed and no one ever developed. So, I mean, that's our view as our board, ultimately, we're just advisors, you know, for you guys. And ultimately, the decisions, you guys.
Two, okay, question.
Go ahead.
So in making that comment right there, so, and you guys making the comment of constructs start in twenty twenty-five, will the road constructs start at the same time as that, or are we, are we doing this prior to them starting construction?
So.
I would infer that it's, we started before, because our project doesn't work without that road construction. Because we don't have, we wouldn't have access to eighty-two and.
And what I'm getting at, sir, is that, so you're asking us for a commitment? And like Junior made the comment, if oil goes down to twenty, we're looking at you, ensuring that you make your commitment as well, because we've just invested a half a million dollars, you know, and so, and for our little community, that's, that's a big chunk, and that's what I'm saying, that's, you know, if I feel comparable and reduce that, my, my.
I think that's the key point there, Mr. Redmond pointed out, dollars would not be paid until facilities.
So we're going to reimburse them.
Reimburse. Okay, so we don't fork it up and get this done, okay, I've got, I've got a question on that, I appreciate that.
And honestly, the twenty dollars a barrel and all does not scare us to come here if it was. I think this community still can support the grocery store and what's in the community, it's still a very budget.
Yes, sir.
There's a storm. Hang on just a second. So we want to double check before we throw it out. Sorry, eighty-eight five mile an hour we're at right now. And he's driving the hard right.
You can hear him.
Somebody can report off her.
Well, I know the, my friend Christie is.
There's power lines down in town.
Sure, Mr. Bowles got that many of those ads.
Mayor, commissioners, I did have a suggestion. So the city, it's a letter of support, we basically need to come up with an M O U and an agreement with the United gentleman here. So if you guys, if you have a basic agreement like that, that you used with other entities, we can look for that, and the attorney, or we need to draft something up.
Let me look.
Okay, you're going to look at this one? Well, we better go then, keep going.
Yeah, what I was saying is, we've had a property under contract, it was supposed to be, under the phaseability period, it was supposed to be September fourteen, fifteen. We had to extend it, we extended it to October, because we will not buy that land if we don't have a agreement from the city to help cover that, that extent, so. That's another, and I was, hopefully Eddie, I don't know that we'll have something, I think, but hopefully Eddie will grant us another, as much time as we need to get our agreements done with, with the all. Just want that you know that, that it lines out there on my part.
Having spoken with Paulius, you know, Junior was correct, it is impossible for us to effectively sign a land check. As soon as he gets his final approval, where then we can send out bar bid or whatever and get a number, I'm assuming, and I speak for the majority of the commissioners here, that we will certainly work. We, Mr. Miranda has already provided one avenue that we can fund this particular project, a portion, or all, whatever that works out. We, we've talked about in the discussions on how to fund it, another one. So I, all I can see right now, we're waiting on is D O T approval. And then we can come up with, because one of the conversations that's been going on here with Commissioner Wyatt is, it could easily be a million dollars in today's, we don't know. I mean, you really don't know, because we work with the D O T and everything changes on literally a meeting or a daily basis. So we need that final stamp, we can then look at, we can get quotes that are contingent upon, you know, maybe a month, I mean, a year lock or whatever, I don't care, we just got to get a realistic number. Because we can't even say, okay, do it, whatever your cost is, that's going to, so we're going to have to pick a dollar figure that is agreeable, that you will be reimbursed in, because we're talking could be, you know, a year and three months, or a year and whatever. There should be two years possibly, and who knows what's going to happen? I mean, I don't foresee asphalt going down, I don't foresee concrete going down, or, or man, or the cost of labor going down, so. Again, I think I speak for this particular commission in that we're ready to move and help any way we can. We have funding sources, so I can't foresee it not happening.
Well, I hope, Mayor, that when we get to that point, that you know, with clear, we have been our job, that we had to take a look at that outside of work as well. So hopefully that will, will improve that, improve that number that we have in the street measures now.
With what's going on, I know we have a full agenda. I have an opportunity, is there anybody seated that would like to ask a question, is there anything? Okay, seeing that, moving on, I thought she said I'm getting up, so. Okay, anything further, Jean?
No, thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, City Manager, Mr. Joe Rollins, thank you. Mr. Joe Robbins, thank you for coming. And Sidney, offer, thank you for coming. Um, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. And welcome to Loving.
Yes, so we're tied.
Be careful.
Thank you.
It hasn't rained here much, so money does.
Big for the day.
Okay. Moving forward, Mr. Gandy.
Mayor. Uh, may I make a motion for ordinance six oh one, authorize project participation agreement from Lita Funds to E D C of fifteen thousand dollars? Addition site drawings for New Mexico D O D.
Hi, we need to. We have a motion second. Uh, ordinance six oh one, Shannon, I believe you were gonna say.
Okay, this is to, uh, to authorize the project participation agreement with, uh, Relent to Economic Development Corporation for Lita Funds to provide the fifteen thousand for additional site land rights they were talking about. And, um, was advertised in the paper over two weeks, or over two weeks ago, which is required by law. And. I guess that's the end. I didn't know if you even understand anything there. Gee, Mike.
Okay. Questions? Hearing that. Go, Allo.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Trukeyo?
Yes.
Mr. What? Yes.
Sir, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty three, approval of New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Grant application. So twenty three dash one ninety five.
Good evening.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. I was listening to the amendment. Okay, that's good. Second. Proceed.
Okay. Well, good evening, uh, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here presenting, um, the first, basically first phase of the park. This is going to, uh, we're gonna demolish all of them, all the picnic carts and amphitheaters as well. And then, uh, give them their building ones as well as we're gonna get ready for trees. So we have to get in there and get that done. So it's all green basically. The grass, one of the, one of the estimates we got on the grass was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're, we're, you know, we're getting a little more. Yeah, yes. So that's more than this grant by itself. And this, I will submit this on the thirteenth if you guys do approve it. Um, I have everything ready. It's ready to go. It's all four of my eight. Everything's in there. Not on the website for me, so.
Is there match on that?
Yes, it's ten percent.
So the city's exposure would be twenty three thousand six hundred and forty five dollars. Uh, ninety percent match would be two hundred and thirty six thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Is this a tier one or a tier two project?
It's a tier two, just because it's over a hundred thousand, I believe.
Okay, I was looking because I went online and I looked, the Outdoor Recreation Trails and Grants, New Mexico. And what I seen on here, it's a two to one match.
It's.
So I'm just curious as far as ninety to one, because this came right from.
Exactly. And well, I, I sent David our, we had our, uh, I can email to tell you that's not right on. Um, they have, I even have the training that I have. It's on the slideshow. I can announce all you guys if you need to. But that's for some reason, that's, that's wrong. It's not right on there.
I, I myself would just like to be sure that it's, uh, ninety to one, ninety to ten instead of two to one.
Yes.
Because this is what came from the New Mexico website.
Yes, and that's why we're so confused when we're having training because it was Zoom and that was funny. That was a lot of people watching. And, and then that's what she's saying. But I even have on the slideshow and everything.
This is just for the application, is that not right? Okay, so upon what, I'm sure you will be able to verify that.
Oh, yeah.
Before we ever got to accept it.
And, and the resolution, I mean, the resolution was written out for the ninety ten. Uh, so that would be what would be submitted with her application. Um, so.
Yes, and I have to have the resolution to submit that.
Sure.
And that's it for now. Uh, we're still getting presents on, we've had plumbers go and stuff for unusual surprises. And that's gonna take, you know, a whole other one. So, uh, it's just, this is the first phase. So we're just gonna start somewhere, you know, go from there. And I gave each of you one. I went ahead and put the budget up on top and wait to take it home and go through it and, you know. That's it.
Questions?
No.
Uh. On that note, referring to City Managers. Can you give with your staff and, and get a plan for the park? A phase plan for us, like how we get the grass, how we get the trees cleaned up, you know, and, and, and what's the length of time to get it done?
I have, in, in there, I have the, the timeline.
Well, I know what your project is.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but your project, you're looking at, you're looking at, you're still looking at two years out.
Oh, yeah. I mean, especially with the grass.
So in the interim, in the interim, what, what are we doing in the interim? I'm not gonna wait on the grant for two years and say, well, we're just waiting on money and we're gonna fix the park.
Yes.
I, you know, I'd like to see some sort of layout, a timeframe that says when we get to A to Z. And, 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 but we just need to see, see something, you know, what, and, and you're the city manager. And, and you have to meet that expectation.
Yes, sir.
And hold you.
So Mr. Boyston and I meet minimum twice a week. Um, recent improvements have been preparing a hundred and fifty seven out of a hundred and sixty seven sprinklers. We currently have projects for the fixing of the lights on the basketball courts and the volleyball courts, which is done, being done by C N M Electric. As well as fixing the lighting on the skate park. And I've sat down with Mr. Boyston and I, he talked about how the parks, we can't be reactive, we have to be proactive. Parks have to be maintained on a regular basis. Um, he assures me that, you know, does have adequate staff. He's got five plus him in the parks, two dedicated cemeteries. He could use an additional person. Um, that's something we haven't decided yet, but I understand the importance of routine maintenance. In trimming the trees, watering the grass, maintaining the grounds. And, uh, well, we have been working towards that.
And I was just seeing if we could get like a ninety, we could have all the treats done, you know, because there's a lot of ditch.
Targets.
Yeah, target there. Just get some targets out there. And, and Jason, what we're looking for, and I've got to talk to City Manager, is that, that we're looking at results, you know, you know, instead of saying we're fixing it. And then next month, we're fixing it. Next month, we're fixing it. You know? And I want to see the results. And I, you know, I drop out there a lot. So I just, I think, so we just need to put target things on.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions? Hearing that, Shannon? I thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Rose Hall.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Trukeyo?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty three dash one ninety seven, opium, so.
Okay. Miranda, are you gonna take this?
Yes, sir. As the Mayor and Commissioners, this will probably be the last large state class action opioid lawsuit. This includes actions against three manufacturers of generic opioids and one distributor, I believe is Walgreens. I don't, I've requested the, uh, distribution, uh, recommendations or guidelines for the funds. Uh, initially, I thought this was a very small, uh, settlement of three thousand dollars. I was corrected. It's two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars payable to Cleveland Lovington. And I don't know the timeline of receiving it. Uh, the last opioid settlements, we got total of about thirty thousand dollars. So it's a terrible problem that affects our community. I would love to maybe partner with, let's say Drug Coalition or Morley Hospital to have at least some kind of counseling here for, uh, substance abuse issues in Lovington. We have a lot in Hobbs. We don't have too many in Lovington. Anyway, the amount was too good to pass down. There's a lot of paperwork. It all reads the same. Um, so I think it's two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. I would have ministered the fund the way I administered the others. And maybe we could partnership, partner with, you know, another organization at the hospital.
Absolutely, the schools also.
And schools. Uh, it, it includes, uh, prevention, counseling. Uh, obviously, we know how this problem affects our community. So I think this is just too good to turn down and I'll be responsible for it.
There are stipulations.
There is.
I have not read this. I assure you.
The stipulations are not in there.
Oh, okay.
Just the agreement. So on the last ones, I called the State Attorney General's Office and they were so strict. It ended up being five thousand to, um, option A, five thousand to Phoenix House Massive Violence Center, five thousand to, um, two other organizations in Hobbs that directly deal with this, but why not here?
The good thing is, you can have an account for it. You can put the money in and you don't have to spend it right away.
No, we don't. It needs to be a standalone dedicated account.
Yes.
I will track it. And, you know, we have so many buildings, look at A and the title of one of those buildings. Why couldn't that be an outpatient treatment facility? We have all these buildings, um, and offices. So that was kind of my thinking behind it. And we'd be the only municipality to opt out in the state that we chose not to, as I was told by attorneys.
Patrick, I'm assuming that, uh, you, you, you are aware and, uh, have no problem with it?
Yeah, I think as long as we adhere to, uh, what the restrictions are about, uh, what you can spend on. Long as we track that spending instead of separate account, I think it's just, it's a, some discipline on our part to administer that fund. Other than that, I think it's a separate. Thank you. You're welcome.
And I, I want to point out, uh, tactics along, gotta say, first thirty five. So I think he knows. I think he knows.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing that and Shannon, roll publicly.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trukeyo?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty three dash one ninety eight, R F P legal lease for lease of vet clinic to include additional vet contract services.
Okay. This resolution?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. Brock is not available to present this resolution tonight. Basically, this is just the routine, um, going out for R F P for vet, for the clinic to include, you know, services rendered by a vet as well as participation in the state new program that we have county funds for, and I believe that's once. I may be incorrect on that, but and, and the current vet is obviously allowed to, um, submit for this as well. So, um, I think her contract expires at the end of October. So this is just helping out for R F P for two months.
Questions?
Do you have a guess on how much we have in there to start us for this sale? I would.
The balance, um, I think that's two fifty and I don't, and I asked her to run tab, you know, run a tab. I think we've gone through less than half of the, of the state new. And there's no timeline on that. But I know we get a lot of dogs from Hobbs in the county.
Right. Okay.
Make a statement. Hundred thousand one?
From the county, a hundred twenty five.
So it is crazy, anyway. I was just worried that the funding, have a timeline on that.
No, the county's open ended on that.
Okay.
And a hundred twenty five is discretion, but two fifty was discretion, remember?
Yes, sir. Okay.
I've heard of it. Ah, Shannon, vote please.
Can you propose?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Trukeyo?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for twenty twenty three dash one ninety nine, authorize application to Water Trust Board, Lovington Wells Re. Say.
Okay. Good resolution.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as you remember, um, we passed a resolution allowing me to apply up, submit a N O I, Notice of Intent, to the state water trust board to reopen two wells identified by Russell Dosse of Southern Miller that the city could potentially benefit from by getting an increased water supply. This is the actual application for this grant. I made sure to list the city's exposure. The total grant is for two, two, a little over two million dollars. Our exposure will be two hundred and seventy thousand to be matched with one point eight million from the state. This is due on, I believe, the fifteenth, whatever day that is. So this is the deadline to apply for this grant.
Questions? Hearing that, Shannon, roll call.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Trukeyo?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes. Ms. White?
I can make a motion, speed bay rules.
Sorry. All right. Do I have just a few moments of, uh, examination?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the only expense I would point out to you would be on page one and two for a total of twenty thousand six hundred and seventy nine dollars to D and D automation and electric. This was to completely replace the, uh, video surveillance cameras at the police department, at the evidence locker, in the evidence room. Um, they were fried in a recent, uh, electrical storm. It's state statute that we have to have our evidence room monitored at all times, twenty four seven with video. This was done by D and the automation. They came at much lower than a competitive bid. So this was long overdue. Um, a lot of the cameras were faded from the sun. Um, so I think there's a total of like twenty eight cameras. So that's that hard, the twenty thousand expenses.
I wanted to ask, uh, we had a coaching service come in and, you know, evaluate the town sirens. Yeah, put a know how that went.
I don't. Chief Morehead is not feeling well, sir. I know that, I know where we charge the money in the town, but.
Right, right. And that's why it was a question that I had. I was wondering if you had any idea on that.
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
That's okay. Who knows? We could maybe use them sirens. I heard the sun, trust me. We had a Dash Electric over at the wastewater. They did electrical repairs and light repairs. Do you happen to know what they did? It's, I'm not questioning the amount. I'm just wondering what they did over there as far as.
I know when you scope it, bucks, and for it. Um, don't know if that was a pump room or not.
Derek here. Derek, I'm sorry, when you were, I know you, uh, do you happen to know what Dash Electric was doing out there?
They've been out there, uh, several times. Uh, they worked in the P L C room. They put, uh, new lights all the way around, uh, facility. The, uh, contact chambers, the basins, they've gone through all those, all the buildings, uh, this red press. So they, they've been out there to work. And, uh, my goodness, my, uh, they were instrumentally getting us started on putting, trying to pipe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing that, Shannon?
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Trukeyo?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go to the closed session, section ten, dash fifteen, dash one. NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section eight two, regarding human personnel matter, City Manager, City Manager candidates.
Another second, ten, roll call.
Mr. Truhea?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Yes.
One minute. This went down the freezer, put the freezer on.
Put the air on seventy-one, so you won't cry.
Oh, no, no, I'm okay, I'm okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Can we walk, I thought it was like, log in and wait?
Right. Yes. There you go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go back into regular session. Matters discussed in closed session, although they're only those specified in motion disclosure and do action state.
Okay. Shannon, roll call, please.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Truhea?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes. Mr. Mariana? The Lovington City Commission would like to offer you the position of City Manager with a pay rate of a hundred and twenty thousand, under mutually agreeable terms and conditions. I guess that's the end of that statement, you don't have to answer right now. This is, we will, there will be, upon a contract and everything else, and there will be discussion, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, the. Don't know that we can, but, no, I'm, she's pointing out the resolution.
We just table it, the resolution of the.
Surely you'll have a decision by the next, whatever, right? The next of meeting.
My decision?
Yeah, I.
And I thank you, everyone, and your confidence in me, and I won't mention.
Okay, I guess we're okay with it.
Well, I think, you know, as, as far as, uh, some direction from, uh, commission, I think it's a good idea to at least address the, the resolution that's there.
That's what I'm saying, you know, that's the reason I'm asking. But, yeah, I was asking him what he had, if we tabled it, we would have to open it back up next meeting. I think we need to table it, because steel must have signed the contract to make it official.
Well, then we can come over, and then we, because that would include our, our decision, plus the pay, plus the mutually agreed upon things.
Right.
The contract, after that, sign, and then, then it would be official after that, Paul.
I think so.
Okay, so, let me remember, your fault. Right there.
Just one question, what is typically the, the life of the contract? Ten years, three years, or is it negotiated?
That's under the, under agreeably.
Mutually.
Usually.
So you'll have input.
You're like violation from three months, because you're already happy. It is, we already talked about this, we already talked about it.
So you're in.
Yes, here, I can make a motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one hundred. Appointment of City Manager to David Miranda, at an agreed upon hundred twenty thousand dollars per year, in the contract with mutually, mutually agreeable terms. Second. End conditions.
Second. Everything happened to you, I don't know you were tabled.
We're not, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
By the way, they can get the contract and everything, and they can argue about all those different things like that. Or say, argue those out, they'll bring them back, this is just make it, get the process moving in the correct direction.
Okay, sorry, I got, I got sidetracked.
Yeah, it's kind of difficult today.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Shannon, roll call, please.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo. Now. Commissioner Truhea?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes. With that, the items of the agenda are exhausted, we are adjourned.
Okay, Chad, my permission.
Yeah, we're ready to sign, all right.